I'm sure everybody's got cabin fever with the latest weather today, so get right into the meeting. For April fifteenth, 2015. We've got ordinances on second reading, five oh one bond ordinance providing for the 2015 general capital improvement program by and in the city of New Brunswick, the county of Millsack, state of New Jersey appropriating six million seven sixty-one nine oh two. Therefore authorizing a debt in the amount of six million four thirty-seven and requiring a down payment of three twenty-four nine oh two. Five oh two, bond ordinance providing for various improvements of the sewer system by and in the city of New Brunswick, the county of Millsack, state of New Jersey appropriating two million six hundred and fifty thousand, therefore authorizing the issuance of two million six hundred and fifty thousand bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Five oh three, bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements for the water system by and in the city of New Brunswick, the county of Millsack, state of New Jersey appropriating nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, therefore authorizing the issuance of nine hundred and twenty-one thousand bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof and requiring a down payment of forty-eight thousand. Five oh four, carry to the next May sixth meeting.
Will be a motion on that, Mr. Council President, when the time comes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We have no ordinances on first reading. We have resolutions, five forty-two, approve a gentleman, it's five forty-three, approve payroll, five forty-four, authorize refund for review tax sales activities, five forty-five, approve appointment of counsel, Lawrence Pittman. Representation of Sergeant John Quick in the matter of Isaiah Jordan versus John Quick, not to exceed five thousand. Five four six, approve amendment of resolution R. zero two one five four zero to pay additional legal fees in the amount of one thousand five eighty-one fifty to Midstner and Midstner, the police officer Brad Burdell in the matter of Deloche versus police officer Brad Burdell, from twenty-one four eleven seventy-five to twenty-two nine ninety-three twenty-five. Five forty-seven, approve amendment of resolution R. one two one four seven eight, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of two thousand two ninety-five to Midstner and Midstner, the police officer Andrew Weiss in the matter of Rodriguez versus police officer Andrew Weiss, from eight thousand nine forty-three to eleven thousand two thirty-eight. Five forty-eight, approve amendment of resolution R. zero two one five three five, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of one thousand five thirteen to Lawrence Pittman, police officer Dan Maison in the matter of Deloche Senior Barry versus the city of New Brunswick, from sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty to seventeen thousand six hundred and three fifty. Five forty-nine, approve amendment of resolution R. zero two one five three six, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of two thousand six hundred and nine fifty to Lawrence Pittman, the detective Christopher Bornheimer in the matter of Rodriguez versus the city of New Brunswick, from ten thousand six hundred and eight to thirteen thousand two seventeen fifty. Five five zero, authorize application, execution, acceptance of grant with Department of Law and Public Safety, Division of State Police, for 2014 Emergency Management Agency assistance application for funding fiscal year 2014, the grant is five thousand, in kind matches, five thousand. Five five one, approve request for street closure requested by New Labor Educational Training Institute, the location is Livingston Avenue, George Street, Long East Street, French Street, Amy Street, George Kilmer Avenue, and Sanford Street, for March commemorating Workers Memorial Day, date is Sunday, April twenty-sixth, 2015, time is two to three P.M., police extra duty.
I'm going to, Council President, Dan is going to be on the sidewalk over the police department as the crisis still authorized, subject to being on the sidewalk over, and that's how the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Five five two, approve request for street closure requested by U.N.D.M.J. Robinson Johnson Medical School, location is Livingston Avenue between New and George Streets, R.W.J.M.S. Compocation to be held at the State Theater, date is Monday, May eighteenth, 2015, time is seven P.M. to eight thirty P.M., police extra duty. Five five three, approve request for use of city property requested by New Brunswick Recreation, New Brunswick tomorrow on St. Peter's Health Care Initiative. The location is Bugle Park and some Fields for Community Health Fair, the date is Saturday, May second, 2015, rain date is Sunday, May third, 2015, the time is twelve P.M. to six P.M., police extra duty. Five five four, approve request for street closure requested by New Brunswick Recreation Department, the location is Johnson-John Drive and George Street, the fifteen thousand New Brunswick Soapbox Turbine, the date is Saturday, June sixth, 2015, and Sunday, June seventh, 2015, time is nine A.M. to three P.M., police extra duty. Five five five, approve request for street closure requested by New Brunswick Recreation, New Brunswick tomorrow, location, parts of New Brunswick city streets will be closed to encourage residents to walk, run, skate, or ride bikes in city streets for a simple bid, the date is Sunday, April nineteenth, June fourteenth, and October fourth, 2015, the time is eleven A.M. to four P.M., police extra duty. Five five six, approve request for use of city property requested by.
Hyacinth.
Hyacinth, okay, the Hyacinth AIDS Foundation, location is Morris World Park for National Lightout Community Information, for HIV, AIDS Prevention in English and Spanish, date Tuesday, August fourth, 2015, time is five P.M. to seven P.M. Five five seven, approve request for use of city property requested by Sigma Alpha Epsilon, location Bugle Park Basketball Board, the Dunk Contest fundraiser, the date is Sunday, April twenty-sixth, 2015, time is one P.M. to five P.M. Five five eight, approve request for street closure requested by the State Theater, the location is Livingston Avenue from George Street to New Street, the forty-five minute performance of drum corps in conjunction with the marching band show that evening at seven P.M., the date is Saturday, May ninth, 2015, time is five P.M. to seven P.M., police extra duty. Five five nine, approve enabling resolutions for new project landing project grant slash loan agreement. Five six zero, approve purchase by police department, new state contract A. seven seven five six zero, software license and related service slash M. zero 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 three, from Chi International Corporation for Software, not to exceed two thousand one ninety-three. Five sixty-one, approve amendment of resolution R. zero one one five nine zero, reason, please purchase of uniforms for new police officers, with safety league incorporated, who business has a land tactical, for work uniforms for the police department, term is twelve month period, commence in June nineteenth, 2014, and end in June eighteenth, 2015, the amount is one thousand eight sixty. Approval list change order will constitute an increase in twenty percent or more of the original contract. Five sixty-two, approve on premise raffle, on premise raffle merchandise at the Hellwood, J.B.R.F. New Jersey Chaplain, date May fifteenth, 2015. Five six three, approve emergency temporary appropriations for 2015. Five sixty-four, approve payment for emergency procurement of water utility for repair of roof and water treatment plant, bill is number one, with L.A. Home Improvement Contract, who business as Marion and Jacobson Darryl Contractors, not to exceed seven thousand eight fifty, purchase order D. seven eight three three two. Five six five, approve amendment of resolution R. one two one three two four, change order number one, credit with T.R. Wenninger Incorporated, reason, final as-built quantities for this project for underground storage tank removal and oil, water separator installation project, specification number eight four one dash thirteen, to credit of twenty-four thousand thirty-one ninety, approval of this change order will not constitute an increase in twenty percent or more of the amount of the original contract. Five sixty-six, approve amendment of resolution R. one two one four nine zero, change order number one, with traffic lines incorporated, reason, final as-built quantities for this project for 2014 traffic line striping, specification number eight five seven dash fourteen, the amount is one thousand five fifteen, approval of this change order will not constitute an increase in twenty percent or more of the amount of the original contract. Five sixty-seven, approve temporary amendments of revised general ordinance for New Project Development Corporation, University of Farmers, Chapter ten, Schedule twenty-five, no parking certain hours, special traffic circulation regulations. Five sixty-eight, approve amendment of resolution R. zero two one three four three, reason, preparation of the design plans and specifications to include installation of bearing walls to reinforce the concrete floors of fire headquarters, with Remington, Burnett, and Vena, constructional engineering services of fire headquarters, George Kilmer Avenue, not to exceed three thousand eight fifty. Five sixty-nine, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance requested by the Landex, Landex Group LLC, reason, provision to work sites in order to maintain the construction schedule on the project, Memorial Stadium, turf field, and track improvements, the date is Saturday, from April eighteenth, 2015, August twenty-ninth, 2015, time is seven A.M. to three thirty P.M. Five seventy, authorize purchase by police department, new state contract A. eight three nine two one slash T. zero one zero nine for Micro Strategies Incorporated, for field support to install and configure tape backup system for the police department, not to exceed three thousand nine ninety. Five seventy-one, authorize purchase by the police department, new state contract A. seven oh two six three slash M. zero four eight three, Micro Strategies Incorporated for tape library for the police department, not to exceed ten thousand four seventeen fifty. Five seventy-two, authorize purchase by police department, new state contract A. seven zero two six three slash M. zero four eight three, from Lenovo United States Incorporated for one server to control tape library for the police department, not to exceed eight thousand eight eighty-four. Five seventy-three, approve request for use of city sidewalk requested by Rutgers Office of the Secretary of Connection in front of New Brunswick Transit Station and J.J. Area Transit Station, for handing out maps and schedules for those attending Rutgers graduation, date is Sunday, May seventeenth, 2015, and time is nine A.M. to one P.M. Five seventy-four, approve award of contract with Suburban Consulting here for construction inspection and engineering services, services for Memorial Stadium and Turf Field, specification number eight seven nine dash fourteen RFP, not to exceed one hundred and fifteen thousand. Five seventy-five, approve request for use of city sidewalk requested by Rutgers Fossil Fuel Digestment, location George Street at Nickel Avenue through Somerset Street to Broward Commons and College Avenue, for Climate Justice March, the date is Wednesday, April twenty-second, 2015, the time is three forty-five to five fifteen. Five seventy-six, approve award of contract with Gooch Grant Incorporated for heavy guest house shutter replacement for the library, specification number three seven two fourteen P., not to exceed fifty-one thousand. Five seventy-seven, held at the request of city clerk. Five seventy-eight, approve authorization to execute sidebar agreement with PBA twenty-three for salary of future police recruits. Five seventy-nine, approve authorization of agreement with Carpenter Shackleton and Company for retained services of management consulting firm for executive search, water director, not to exceed eleven thousand. Five eighty, approve resolution supporting in concept the lower row and watershed partnership. Five eighty-one, authorize tax collect to transfer over payments on several taxing utility accounts. Five eighty-two, approve resolution to authorize refund to Vescro, New Brunswick, New Jersey Urban Renewal LLC, amount is thirty-four eighty-seven. Five eighty-three, approve resolution to authorize refund to Vescro, J.S.M. and Folks Street LLC, amount is nine thirty-one sixty-six. Five eighty-four, approve relaxation of city noise order requested by Giant Engineering on behalf of Barr &amp; Barr, the reason is paving work as part of the George Kilmer-French Street intersection improvement associated with the East Tower Project and Robinson Johnson University Hospital, the date between April twenty, 2015, and May eighth, 2015, over a three to five day period, time is seven P.M. to six A.M. Five eighty-five, approve relaxation of city noise order requested by Joseph Givaudins Incorporated, reason, directed crane to place exterior panels at the College Avenue Redeveloped Project, the date is Saturday, May second, and Sunday, May third, 2015, ultimate dates, Saturday, May ninth, and Sunday, May tenth, 2015, time is seven A.M. to seven P.M. Five eighty-six, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance requested by Barr &amp; Barr, reason, before weekend work at the Robinson Johnson University Hospital, East Tower Project, the date is Saturday, April eighteenth, 2015, August first, 2015, time is seven A.M. to five P.M. Sit. Clerk Paul Holt, please.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Garladi is absent, Council President Egan?
Here.
Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been complied with and satisfied, and we have the manual notice, which gave sufficient notice in time and place, in conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of the city hall of New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely, the home news Tribune, please stand and pledge allegiance.
I'm glad we just did the flag of the United States of America and to be voted for what stands, one nation under God, in the visual, with liberty and justice.
Again, we'll have a moment of silence for our men and women serving in our armed forces, and for our men and women in our forces who lost their lives in battle. Thank you. We have minutes?
Yes.
We have minutes for the previous meeting of March eighteenth, and a motion.
Motion.
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We have ordinances on second reading, we have five oh one, bond ordinance provided for the 2015 general capital improvement program by and in the city of New Brunswick, the county of Millsack, state of New Jersey appropriating six million seven sixty-one nine oh two, therefore authorizing a debt in the amount of six million four thirty-seven and requiring a down payment of three twenty-four nine oh two. Would anybody in the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Anybody? Seeing none?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Five oh two, bond ordinance provided for various improvements in the sewer system by and in the city of New Brunswick, the county of Millsack, state of New Jersey appropriating two million six hundred and fifty thousand, therefore authorizing the issuance of two million six hundred and fifty thousand bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Seeing none?
Move the order.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Five oh three, bond ordinance provided for various capital improvements for the water system by and in the city of New Brunswick, the county of Millsack, state of New Jersey appropriating nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, therefore authorizing the issuance of nine hundred and twenty-one thousand bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof, and requiring a down payment of forty-eight thousand. Would anybody like to comment on this particular ordinance? Seeing none?
Move the order.
Go ahead.
Move the order.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Five oh four, do you agree? We need a motion on, we need a motion to carry resolution, I'm sorry, ordinance five oh four to the May sixth meeting, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Egan?
Yes. No ordinance on our first reading, we have resolutions, five forty-two. Five eighty-six, would be, would be held on five seventy-seven, and was noted before that the resolution for the New Labor Walk is going to be on the sidewalk and not on the streets. Am I missing anything, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, you haven't, Council President.
Thank you. Would anybody from the public like to comment on any of these resolutions this evening, any other thing on the resolutions, please?
Good evening, Mr. Council President, my name is Charles Bradville, New Brunswick, five four five, fourth one, can somebody please tell me what this case is, what's the nature of the case?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a matter instituted by plaintiff Mr. Jordan alleging false arrest, and I guess would be characterized as false charges or malicious prosecution, it's filed in the federal district court, and Mr. Jordan's named only Sergeant Quick with several other New Brunswick police officers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's very troubling that there's yet another accusation of false arrest, I think it's a theme that's repeating itself here, and I'd like to know what the council's doing about that.
What are we doing, what are we doing about it?
About so many people bringing claims they've been falsely arrested.
Get the people not to do it.
I'm sorry?
Get the people not to do it, but it's their prerogative. You're indicating that it's a police force pull, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying there's a lot of accusations, that's troubling.
And unfortunately, in this day and age, people sue people to try to get money, and that may be the reason.
Have any false arrest cases been settled by the city recently?
I don't know that, it's, I don't.
Could you ask Mr. Chairman, should there have been any settle cases?
I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head either, but I know the false arrest cases, but I don't know any details off the top of my head.
All right, well, I've got a feeling you're gonna have another one. The next one, it's, it just makes me sick to keep seeing more money paid for an attorney for police officer who killed someone, Brad Burdell, can you tell me what is the status of this case? The matter of Deloche versus Burdell.
Mr. Chairman?
What I can tell you is the case is actively progressing, I don't believe there's a trial date yet, but it's being obviously defended by the city of New Brunswick's FIF attorneys, and I can't give you an estimation as to when it will be concluded, unfortunately, these things do take time.
Can you give an estimate of how much it's gonna cost?
I had no idea.
Okay, well, taxpayer money being wasted, and I see another, another police shooting matter next, and another matter involving Deloche killing, it's, it just sickens me to see the taxpayers' money being spent on this. Next one I want to ask about is the, I guess it's one point four million dollars, it's number five five nine, the New Brunswick Landing Project, what's going on there?
Number?
Five five nine, number eighteen.
Okay. Who can answer that?
Yes, sir. That was a project that was done back in 'oh nine, this is just the completion paperwork, the monies were given to us by DEP, the city gave that money to the county for the project, the county got money from DEP also, that project's, and this is just paperwork they needed, and a resolution from the council was part of that paperwork.
Okay, thank you.
So can I ask why the resolution's being passed six years after the project?
Because that's when DEP asked for it.
Okay, can you tell me, is that project a success, are there a lot of people parking their boats here in New Brunswick?
Not that I know of, I don't see many boats parked there, I don't know if it's a success.
If the county owns that project, we'd have to ask the county, we could ask the county.
Okay, I think it's, you know, if we get one point four million dollars, I think we should spend it in a, you know, a place where it's gonna make an impact, rather than trying to turn the city into something it's not, we don't have people riding their boats here, it's just not, not what's going on. So I hope next time we have an opportunity to spend money, we invest it better. Can I ask what changes are part of five six seven, number twenty-six, no parking certain hours, special regulations?
Let me go five six seven? Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Council President, I know Mr. Gooch is here, can answer a lot more details, but it's my understanding, these are three parking stalls on Hamilton Street that are being required to be temporarily removed for parking purposes in order to make safe turn radiuses for the construction vehicles that are coming out of this particular project down from Union Street.
So there's no permanent loss of parking?
No, it's to the end of the year, but those, those spots will be like eternal.
Okay. There's about five seven one and five seven two, the tape library for the police department, what exactly is that, what does that mean?
Captain Miller?
The backup system for communications department.
A backup system, so backing up what?
All recordings that are done in communications.
And so those recordings would be like dispatch communications, or?
Yes, dispatch, yes.
And any other types of records, or just dispatch communications?
And you have a touch?
All the recordings that are done in communications.
Follow up for that. The next one is also a police matter, five seven eight, can somebody tell me what the sidebar agreement is with the police unit?
Five seven eight, sir?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir, please. This is a sidebar agreement is like an amendment to a contract or agreement whereby the PBA and the city are agreeing to pay future police recruits that may enter the academy during this calendar year at a reduced rate, and which is provided for in the actual PBA contract, to save the city of New Brunswick's substantial money, I think, maybe about fifty thousand dollars, but it'll enable the city to hire new officers, get them into the academy.
Thank you. So how long will it affect their salaries, will it affect their entire career, or is it just for one year, or?
I believe it just affects their initial salary while they're in the academy.
And do you know by how much?
I believe it's fifty-four thousand dollars.
Fifty-four thousand dollars for fifteen, over fifteen officers?
Five officers.
Five officers, are we hiring fifteen or five this year?
Well, this number is based upon five officers, I don't know.
The sidebar agreement is based on five officers?
I thought it was discussed at previous meetings that there were gonna be fifteen new officers hired, is that plan been changed?
I don't know any about the hiring of many officers. This is just for initial, these five officers?
This is for the initial five, there could be more, they're supposed to hire more, and they probably all do the same thing, but just for these five now is the sidebar.
So I guess they would each be making ten thousand dollars less than they normally would in their first year, to eleven thousand?
I don't know that. It's only for the time they're in the academy, once they start, they do start at step one of their normal pay rate.
Okay.
So only one possible during the time that they're in the academy.
Okay. I'll move on to the next one. You know, I don't mean to make light of this, this company that we keep hiring to find water directors, you know, when you go to like a store, and you have a punch card that you get, you know, like buy five and get the six free, would they do something like that for us?
I like your bargaining chip, I try to do that.
I mean, why do you, why do you keep going to the same companies, what I'm saying, if they found us a water director?
Mr. Lachlan's not here, I know he does that, he takes care of that, hiring that, he did that the last time, so I would just wait till he comes back, and we can get, you can get an answer from him, because he was involved in that.
I would say if we can, see, I want us to hire a new water director quickly, but I don't want us to do it hastily, I don't want us to repeat the same mistakes we've made before, so if you've got a guy who's been the water director, he only lasted eighteen months, the first guy they hired, you got the new guy who made a racist remark, and correct me if anything I say is wrong here, he said the N-word on the job, and he is now, not been terminated, he's been demoted, and we're gonna pick the same company that found him and recommended him, and we're gonna have them hire the next water director? Does that make any sense?
Picks him based on their criteria, I mean, you know, it's tough signaling somebody out, you know, that the guy made a mistake, the water director, and I can't answer any of these questions because I'm not involved in doing this, I would reserve the time when Tom Lachlan comes back, you can speak with him about hiring this company.
For the record, I also think it's a problem that Mr. Lachlan is so involved in the water utility, he was the one who was in charge when we, when the city falsified records that they were submitting to the state government, and got us in this whole mess, so why is Mr. Lachlan picking a company that has a track record of picking water directors who don't last?
Time. Would you like to move on to some other resolutions, I don't wanna cut you off?
That's the last one I have, I just wanna ask, answer to that question, why, why are we picking Carpenter Shackleton and Company to pick the new water director after they, they did a poor job?
Once again, I'm gonna tell you that Mr. Lachlan is involved in hiring this company, you'll have to ask him that question, he'll have to answer it, okay? They've done a good job, he feels good, obviously he feels, he has a good relationship with that, and I don't, that's all I can tell you.
I'm very concerned about that good relationship you speak of, I think, I shouldn't be the one to ask questions, I think the council should be asking questions of Mr. Lachlan, and I would caution you not to pass this tonight if you don't have all the facts, and Mr. Lachlan hasn't, hasn't made his case yet, and by the way, the water director is now Mayor Cahill, and he's not here tonight either, so nobody's here to defend this, you shouldn't pass it, that's all.
We contract with this company because there's experts in this field, and the last two people that we hired, one left, which is a normal thing to happen, the other one unfortunately, you know, had a problem, but they were very well qualified in the.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, to my head, and to nine one six.
I actually have one question, but now I have two, unfortunately, what was the mistake that the water director made?
Mr. Egan, you can ask any question you want, but I would caution you not to speak out any personal matters.
First of all, we're talking about the resolutions right now, we're on the resolutions, and I'm not gonna answer any questions.
You mentioned about the resolutions, and then within the resolutions, you mentioned that the water director made a mistake. I was asking you, what was the mistake he made?
As I said, I advise you not to answer the question, which we'll be discussing a personnel matter, which is.
So why didn't you, so why didn't you advise him before he said that he made a mistake? Why didn't you advise him before he?
Let's all try, let's all try to get along here, please.
He's gonna say what he's gonna say, sir.
So let him say it now.
Mr. Pippin, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Mr. Pippin, let's just, please move on, sir.
My second, my second question is, what did Councilman Anderson mean when he said that's what people do? When he mentioned a false arrest that he had a concern about, you said, well, that's what people do. Then your statement was, you followed that by saying that, you know, people stop suing people because people wanna sue people for money. What that led me to believe, listening to that, was you're not gonna do any, any of you, because none of you responded, you're not gonna do any due diligence to find out whether people are falsely arrested. You automatically assume that all people wanna do is sue, file lawsuits.
No, what I said was, in other terms, it's a litigious society, people have a tendency to do that, due process will determine whether or not the person receives an innocent or a guilty plea, and you go from there.
But your first assumption was, people like to sue for money, that was on your mind? You didn't say?
We mentioned that, that's what he was talking about.
You have to be unbiased, because my reality is, police like to beat people up.
Well, that's, that's your first response?
That's my first response.
And I'm thinking like, police could possibly hurt somebody.
But I'm not in the position, but I'm not in the position, I can have that thought. I can think that police like to beat people up, because I'm not in a position to advocate for the community, you are. And the first thing that came to your mind was to negate the fact that police possibly can beat people up, because I can show, I know factually how police officers operate, but you said people, you basically said the community that you serve are lies, and they just wanna sue for money. That's what I got.
What I meant to say was basically, people do sue.
Okay, now let me ask you a question.
And I asked when Mr. Cradell, basically, because he seemed to be taking a position that the police were totally wrong, and I think you should let the due process prove it out and find out.
Now let me ask you a question, do police officers beat people up? Listen. You seriously?
I don't know the specifics.
You don't know the specifics? So you're basically, we're getting way off the, we're getting way off the resolutions here, come back later. We have anything else on the resolutions? Wait, you're basically stating on the record that you're not qualified to make certain decisions for the community, that you just burst in certain, that's not what he said.
That's what he said.
I didn't think that.
That's what you got out of it, right? That's what you got out of it, what he said. I accept your point. Anybody else on the resolutions? On the resolutions?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to draw attention to Resolution 557. It's approved for request of Sigma Alpha Epsilon. I'm not in business all the time making sweeping indictments against certain groups, but this is the same group that nationally, I belong to a fraternity, first of all, I wanna preface that. My fraternity is Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, we're 100 years old. We know, I can, we're 100 years old, we're an international organization. We know the same rituals, I can go across the country, we know the same rituals, same songs, same things that we do, we know the same secrets. Now, this organization, last month, they were filmed on TV on a bus singing, and I quote, I'm quoting right now, singing, "There'll never be an N-word," and that sounds sanitized, they were singing, "There'll never be a nigger in S A E, there'll never be a nigger in S A E. You can hang up on a tree, but they'll never sign with me, there'll never be a nigger in S A E." In a box, that would just be one incident, but over the years, there have been several incidents that have happened, where one time maybe a mistake, two times it's a pattern, three times it's endemic. And just some of the things that I looked up, because I don't just throw out things like that, but just some of the incidents that have happened over the years, first of all, they give veneration to people, it was formed before the Civil War, they give veneration to a lot of their founders who fought on the South in the Civil War, and you know, a lot of times that they hang the Confederate flags during places. 1982, the University of Cincinnati, they suspended two of their members because they had a party around Martin the King Day, where they encouraged people to dress up, they encouraged people to dress up in blackface, bring food stamps, and it said, "Bring your father if you know him." In 1992, they had a jungle fever themed party which featured blackface, grass skirts and slave hunts. In 2006, two of their members were suspended by University of Memphis for harassing another member for dating a black woman and bringing her to the chapter's house. In 2013, Washington University, Washington University, the chapter was suspended after its pledges were instructed to direct racial slurs to a group of black students. In December, just recently, this chapter, chapter at Clemson University, they hosted a Kribsmas party, where they encouraged their members to dress up like L.A. gang members, like Kribs, and come to the party. Also, they named their pledges, like, in some places, they named their pledges racial names such as Simba, Mushu, and some tasks to perform, they had one of the Latino pledges dress up in a sombrero and a poncho and had him mooning along at the college. They also had some of the African-American pledges dressing up in African jungle animals and safaris. Now, that is not an organization, granted, the local organization, they may not adhere to those things, but when you wear the letters of an organization and you have this that's becoming endemic, it's not a mistake anymore. Now it becomes endemic, and that's what you gotta wear. Whatever my fraternity wears across the country, whatever we do, it's not on our local chapter, it's on the entire organization. So I'm standing right now and saying that, I'm not going, I'm gonna vote, I'm telling you, I'm gonna vote no, because they're trying, they wanna hold something in the park, they wanna hold something in the park where our taxpayers pay money at, and I don't think that that's something that we should have endorsed right now. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions?
Yes.
Okay. So seeing nobody on the resolutions?
Yes, hi there. I actually just walked in, I'm not sure which resolution number I'm speaking regarding, but I am speaking in support of a resolution for the city to support the Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership in Concept. The Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership is a nonprofit in the Lower Raritan Watershed. It is representing 54 municipalities in the Lower Raritan Watershed, including New Brunswick. We've already received support from Highland Park in the form of a resolution. We've also received support from Millsix County Board of Chis and Freeholders in the form of a resolution. We are working on, among other things, I'm sorry, I'm out of breath, on improving access to the Raritan River, on improving water quality of the Raritan River and the subwatersheds, and improving education, scientific education for Lower Raritan Watershed residents. We have been working on community-based water quality monitoring, we've done outreach and education, on visual habitat assessment, macro invertebrate assessments. We are working to get that information out to the community in the watershed in New Brunswick. We have also worked to partner with organizations like the local CoLab Arts on projects like the current installation in the wellness center called the Found in the Watershed Sculptures. We have an event this coming Saturday, not this Saturday, but the following Saturday, to open this gallery, to show the objects that have been created, the sculptures that have been created out of found objects during cleanups in the watershed. This has, this partnership has prompted development of, perhaps you've heard the Raritan River Project Rail Arts River, to do wave binding between communities in the Lower Raritan Watershed, between transit stations and the river, to encourage access between those two important historical entities, the river being the source of a lot of motivation to settle in the area, the rail station's also being a historical generator for location in the area. We have done a number of other outreach efforts, cleanups, we have cleanup tomorrow, or, sorry, on Saturday in Mile Run Brook, we've done other cleanups throughout the rest of the watershed, and we're looking for your support now for the, in support of the Lower Raritan Watershed Partnership in Concept.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the resolutions? Okay, seeing none?
Councilmember Anderson?
No on 557 and?
There was slow motion, so I'm making a motion.
Motion?
Second.
Thank you.
So wait a second, you wanna, you wanna go no on?
Oh, yeah, well, I don't know what you want.
Yeah, no, no.
I'm saying yes to the resolutions and no to 557.
I'm going the same way.
Yes to everything except 557.
Okay, so I'm all good. Councilmember Anderson?
Did that, yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes to every, all members of the council except 557.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes to, yes.
And Council President Egan?
Yes, to all except 557. Thank you. Public portion of the meeting will now take place, anybody who wishes to address the council, you have five minutes to address the council, say your name and address, if you have the microphone.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Barry Compton of Paul Ring Street. In the March 24th home news, there was an article concerning the New Brunswick City and its begging ban, and that's why I'm here tonight, so, councilman. I recommend that the council, the planning board, whoever can do two things, to improve the city. The first thing is that there really is a definite need for affordable housing, and if it's going to be rental housing, it needs to be cheap, like 600 or 700 dollar a month apartments. And the second thing is, this city really needs more industry, whether it's on Jersey Avenue or elsewhere, but is, in the time that I've been alive and visiting and now living in this city, we have just lost so many businesses. I'm not sure if they, if the commercial rents got too high, or if there wasn't enough parking, or, or what, but if, if, if any of you walked out of here and walked from Albany Street to Livingston Avenue, you could maybe gain 10 pounds if you went into all the eating establishments, I mean, coffee shops, the World of Beer, pizza, dumplings, Burger King, whatever. And when I, when I was much younger, we had a great diversity of businesses and manufacturing. You had at least one clothing store, one furniture store down on, on Church Street, we had PJ Young's, the Newberry's, Woolworth's, and now it seems that the entire city of New Brunswick, if it's not with J&amp;J, The Courthouse, Rutgers, or the hospitals, you mainly got eating establishments up and down like Eastern Avenue, or hair salons, nail salons, and, and theaters, and, and I don't think that that's the, a sound basis for a city of this magnitude. I can see, see all these high-rise, very expensive apartment complexes, but there's nothing left for normal people to, to live in. And that's all I have to, to recommend, that you build cheap, affordable housing and get more businesses and/or manufacturers.
Hello, my name is Saskia Jablon, I am representing the Black Lives Matter, I represent New Brunswick, and I just wanted to raise a few questions about the concerns about the, concerning the false arrests, and also just some of the, some of my personal experiences in New Brunswick, and maybe like talk about some possible solutions. So I feel that it is a problem that we might be having this false arrest, especially concerned, especially like with my own personal experience, my father has been harassed by the police in New Brunswick on many occasions, once he even had to convince them that he lived in his own house, so, you know, he actually had to knock on the door, and I had to get my brother and my sister out to convince the police that he did in fact live in the house, because they were going to arrest him on the basis that he looked like a suspect or something, he looked, I don't know. But I just wanted to ask about any possible solutions or any, any plans moving forward to sort of address these issues? If there's anything in the future that you guys are working on?
To adjust what, to what, for the police department?
Yeah, just any, any possible solutions, just addressing, you know, these false arrests, or just even maybe, I feel it could be even an issue of, for issue profiling, you know, some type of issue within, within the department that's causing these false arrests.
Well, I know our police are involved in, Captain Miller, you wanna speak about some of the training that you guys have been going, doing the last couple of years?
Cover the training over, you're referring to litigation of false arrest, and that's all it is, it's litigation, there's nothing showing that the officers here charged, did false arrest, I mean, you have to let it go through due process and let the outcome come as it is. All the officers go through a litany of training?
That's what I want to speak about, and I'm not, I want you to, first of all, we as a council, we don't run the police department, okay? We don't, we're not involved in the day-to-day.
Yes, you do.
No, we, listen, I don't mean an outburst for you, okay? Just sit here. We don't run the everyday operation of the police department, under whatever everybody else might wanna believe, but we do not run the operation of the police department.
But you could work with them to sort of come up solutions to make them better, right?
No, we don't do that.
Not at all?
No, we do not, we do not get involved in the operation of the police department, they have their own, the people that do all the training, and we're not involved in the day-to-day operations of the police department, that's just, that's the truth.
Can I say something?
Yeah, sure.
We do not, you know, I agree that we do not get involved in the day-to-day operations of the police department, but I do believe that when there is a situation that a community is being reported, whether or not it's true or not, that's not for us to decide, but we could talk to the police department and share what the community is saying, and let them deal with the situation. So I do believe that we have a voice to say that there is something going on. We are not to tell them what to do or how it needs to be addressed, but we do have a responsibility to say what are the concerns of the community.
Okay, well, I would just suggest that maybe moving forward, because from my own personal experience, like I said, it's not just like these litigation issues, it's not like anything, it's more of an issue of profile, I feel. For my own father having to explain to the police that he lives in his own house, I feel that something that should be addressed by the city council, or something that should be addressed to the police department, I feel that if there is a voice within the city council, that, you know, there should be at least possible solutions raised, you know, concerning that issue.
Thank you.
Anthony Miranda, 19th Street, I'm also a representative of Rutgers Black Lives Matter. As you may remember, I addressed the council about a month or so ago. You don't control day-to-day operations in the police department, and I understand that, but you do pass some policy. And we understand that police are a cornerstone to functioning civil society. However, the police cannot function properly, they can't do their job if they don't have the trust of the people. And given the rising allegations of false arrests, given just Saskia's testimony and other research that I've had, we have a number of issues in New Brunswick where people... we have a number of issues in New Brunswick where people aren't trusting the police department. And this isn't just in New Brunswick, we're seeing this all over the country right now. And it's not just an issue of not trusting the police department. I mean, there's a lot of reasons that people aren't trusting the police department, because there's systemic corruption, which you guys do have the power to stop. So in Ferguson, you know, that's worst-case scenario. We've seen a complete breakdown of civic order. And it's because people don't trust the police department, and it's because there was nothing done proactively to address systemic issues of corruption and racial profiling. The same thing happened in Newark, the Justice Department came in there. And now Newark is taking steps with a review board to address that issue. And even that is reactionary. So from what I heard tonight, it seems like you guys have a wait-and-see sort of attitude. What we're asking is for you to take proactive steps, not to be reactionary, not to wait for the next time something like Barry Deloitte happens. Start, we're willing to work with you, we're students, so, you know, we have a lot of research, resources. We can do the research for you if you guys need. So we're asking you to be proactive. I'd like to know if, you know, you have done anything proactive. The fact that Richard Rowe was able to go five years with the kind of mishandling of internal affairs cases is unbelievable. And I'd like to know what kind of policy was implemented to stop that.
What kind of policy was implemented? We don't, we don't, we don't implement policy on the police, I don't know what, you don't understand. The policy was implemented by the Attorney General's office, I believe. Captain Miller, you want to talk about it?
Well, the Richard Rowe incident, he was, no longer works here, he was removed from his position and no longer worked for the police department. The internal affairs function was revamped with the department. We had oversight from the prosecutor's office, and, you know, it runs very efficiently now. You know, the prosecutor's office, it actually commended us for the job that internal affairs does now. It was completely revamped, and like I said, Sergeant Rowe no longer works here. Discipline for his actions when he was in internal affairs has been changed.
So, I don't know if efficiency is the word. If anybody's read Mr. Cradaville's article from about a week or so ago, we know that there's ongoing internal affairs complaints from almost five years ago. Furthermore, I'd like to ask, what is the status of the liaison for the internal affairs process?
I don't know the status of that, that's up to the mayor. That's his decision on the status of the liaison.
So again, I think you guys are underplaying the power that you do have. Are you telling me that you don't have the power to pass ordinances? Could you not introduce an ordinance for a review board that represents this community and then pass that ordinance?
Well, the council has the power to pass ordinances. Gentlemen, I think is referred to what are called civilian review boards. And that's something that obviously would have to be researched and explored. My own quick personal knowledge of them is that they don't control police departments. They wouldn't accomplish, perhaps what the gentleman is seeking anyway. They can't force police departments to change policies or practices or instill change within police departments. The police department is still going to run the way police departments run. The answer to the county prosecutor, ultimately to the state Attorney General's Office, the Police Training Commission dictates policies and practices.
Thank you. Sorry, your time is running out, you're over the five minutes.
Excuse me? I have a minute and twenty seconds. So I have done some research in civilian review boards, so like I said, we're students, you can come, you know, use us. We'll help you guys out, we want to work with you. And no, you're right, it wouldn't change the system of policing. However, it would be a step in holding people accountable, having transparency, and building trust. And that, the step of holding people accountable is a way to make systemic change in the future. If police are held accountable for their actions, you know, if there are cases of police falsely arresting people, racially profiling people, using inappropriate language, they'll think twice about it if they can get subpoenaed and investigated by a civilian review board.
Great job. Hi, my name is Shereen Hamza. Thanks for, it's time today to address the city. I'm also a fourth-year student at Rutgers University, and I wanted to speak about, also a supporter of the Black Lives Matter movement there. And I'd like to address how the issue of homelessness in New Brunswick is also tied to the issue of gentrality. So for the past year, students in New Brunswick have been spending every other Saturday morning in the community. A lot of times this means, you know, and sort of like grabbing food breakfast, called Food Not Box. And what, we've learned a lot. Our eyes have been opened as to the severity of the issue of homelessness in the city. There are far more people who are unhoused than could ever fit in the private shelter, shelters that exist here. And recently, in the past, in fall, the Rutgers Library instituted a new policy that after 10:00 PM, people had to show their IDs. This was clearly in response to various factors. There, we've shown that there has been space in the library, it's mostly been profiling unhoused people in the library who otherwise are made welcome, but this is an issue. And at that moment, a lot of Rutgers students found out that there is no public shelter in New Brunswick, that the city doesn't actually fund that. Yes, there's a soup kitchen, but like if you call the private shelter, there's a three-month or longer waiting list at any given time of the year. So, you know, the folks who spend a lot of time in the parks, there's one, you know, on Jersey Ave, and there's Boyd Park. And they have a lot of anecdotal evidence about also being mistreated by the police. And there's really no way that if like for five years, a taxpaying citizen of New Brunswick who has a house here, like lives here, has not been able to get his own issues addressed at this council, like, you know, what is a student like me going to come here with a person who is not that secure and get their issues addressed? Like, it just, it doesn't really feel like that would actually happen, that that kind of action was happening here in the city. So the both, the two things that I want to say is that it's not just an issue of people not having shelter. And, you know, shelter first, housing first is one of the sort of very, very well-researched ways that homelessness has been reduced, especially in Utah recently, a lot of, that's a very conservative state in terms of fiscally conservative. But they implemented this housing-first thing, and they've vastly reduced the number of people who are unhoused. And that's, that's the kind of system that we'd really like to see. There are tons of properties here that are empty and foreclosed. And we think that there's a lot of support in the Rutgers community, we think there's a lot of support in the New Brunswick community. People see that homelessness has been an issue. I know that community activists like Walter have been advocating this for years. And so we, I just want to know, like, is this on the agenda? Is this something that the city plans to address? Because it's just, it's very visible, it's very visceral, there are people here who are suffering and have been here for a really long time.
I can't answer your question because I don't know the answer to it. I mean, we don't, I don't know if anything's going on, can anybody help me? Mr. Patterson, please?
The city takes the issue of homelessness very seriously, and we've dedicated a lot of funds to addressing that problem. The city did help fund the homeless shelter that is on Beale Street, the Ossing Shelter down there, which is a men's shelter. The shelter system in Middlesex County is run through the county, through their continuum of care program, which does have a housing-first policy. So there is a women's and family shelters that are in Edison, that if you're homeless in New Brunswick, you can avail yourselves of those also. Plus the men's shelter here, there's the rotating shelter in the, in the winter months that churches in town use. We've also been developing a lot of supportive-needs housing over the last three years. We've done a project on Redmond Street called Promise House, developed ten units there. We're currently under construction with a project just down the street here at First Reformed Church, Dina's Dwelling. Women Aware just did a project, which was the first supportive-needs housing for victims of domestic violence in the state of New Jersey. There are also a number of support programs to go along with these, such as Rutgers Behavioral Health, Salvation Army, Elijah's Promise, Promise Culinary School to address the needs of the homeless population. So, lady is very correct, there is much more demand for these services than we have, but we only have limited funds. We are taking our home dollars that we are giving by HUD this year and proposing to use them for additional supportive-needs housing to address the homeless population. But there's a much bigger need for it, but the funds that we can get from the state and the federal government are limited for that. But we have put that as a high priority for, for housing in New Brunswick.
Thank you.
Thanks for that information. It's definitely something that some of the unhoused folks that we hang out with know about. But again, like you said, there's a lot more demand than there is supply. And, you know, like coming here has really opened my eyes as to that there has been a lot of spending on development in the city. I mean, a place to store boats was mentioned, but like, there's no, there's nothing in sight for building another shelter. I mean, there are just way more people here that need a place to sleep than can be accommodated. And like, it's great that there is some progress, but it just doesn't seem like the kind of rapidity that really needs to happen on this issue. So that's, that's why I'm here, and thank you for making me.
Thank you. Sir?
Yes, good evening, city council. I'd address Mr. Patterson, if you guys don't know about the issue of homelessness. I'm talking about homes, I was here last time, I had a petition. To enlighten you, we have petitionchange.org, we have over three hundred signatures at this moment. In reference to what you just said, Mr. Patterson, I'll need the microphone.
Captain, can you tell me, is your name, please?
I'm a community advocate for the homeless. Oh, Walter Harris, Walter Harris for the right.
Sir, you got to address through the chair, sir.
I'll address, I was talking to Patterson, he said he wasn't aware of the issue, so I was going to address.
Well, you got to speak through the chair, so I just wanted to just.
All right, so I'll address you, but for everyone in the room. Nonetheless, okay, so you stated cafeteries. Cafeteries, there's a waiting list, like you stated, it preferably takes people that are on welfare, social security, people coming home from prison. The general populace of homeless is commonly male. Women Aware, you maybe find out of like a three percent of females in the homeless population of New Brunswick. Secondly, First Reformed Church, oh, I'm sorry, Salvation Army is not in New Brunswick.
The district's on New Brunswick.
What is it? Salvation Army?
Yeah.
They don't house homes, they house homes there.
They have a clothing program and a feeding program.
A clothing and feeding program, they don't house homes, we're talking housing first and evening.
It's a support, it's a support.
Out of home, you have a home. Housing Person Initiative proven to save taxpayers ten thousand dollars from the article of Jennifer Vella's Human Services when everybody in the state went to speak with her in Trenton. Secondly, the woman, the family shelter, that's just for families, but the general populace, Elijah Promise, they feed homeless, they demand, they focus on addiction. We're talking, I work at Cafeteries Emergency Care Services in Trenton, New Jersey, in our capital, and we did wraparound services with emergency first. I mean, I'm sorry, Housing Person Initiative, where if you took the client, you gave them the room. You talk about these units.
You got to address through the chair.
I'll say, you talk about the units that you're asking about, and you're speaking so highly of. It's that those units will not suffice for over a hundred and fifty undocumented people in the streets. And the point in time is not valid, it's never been valid, they're counting the same people over and over. You feed a hundred thousand, you feed a hundred thousand people a year, if you keep copying the same number and feeding a hundred and fifty people throughout the year. Yeah, there's a hundred thousand right there. I worked for Elijah Promise when they had FEMA fund, and ran the first-ever emergency shelter in Elijah Promise in a meeting room because of the past, it would not allow us to use open space larger than this room that could fit everybody in the streets in on military couches, from churches and clergies. So I have enough to get to churches, clergies, things of that nature, but I'm asking that the city, after this petition is through, I'm coming back with a legal petition. And I'm asking that they raise this, that actually make a building, a public building like the Rutgers University students stating, that is a visible problem, you can't just sweep this under the rug, you can't just make like one building, or you can't cut out. And HUD, HUD has millions and billions of dollars of unlimited funding on HUD. We can go to the computer right now and I can show you plenty of funding sources for the Housing Person. Secondly, excuse me, stuff being here. Well versed in this issue, I've been through chronic homelessness myself. Whatever it is, I can bring firsthand testimonies of homeless people that have careers, that had bad divorces, there's no one causation for homelessness. If you need some enlightenment about that, you can go watch, what is it, the PRAS, Skid Row Project, the PRAS, a celebrity that went homeless in Skid Row is the highest population of homeless in the, like, in the United States. Secondly, there's plenty, if there's funding out here, if not there's funding out here, we're trying to get public support since the city doesn't want to do anything. Moving towards getting an SWL, which is a social welfare organization, which I can get the same funding that the city's getting, but that's going to be a process and development process, you're in development. So in development means while you're in development, somebody could die. And those emergency shelters, they're only during the winter months. During the summer months, there's allergens, there's mosquitoes, there's all types of stuff out there in the elements. Challenge everybody on the city council, go live in a park for a month, and don't wean out your refrigerator, and eat at the soup kitchen, and keep a smile on your face while you're doing it. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Marlena Warren, resident of New Brunswick, and a voting House member of the New Brunswick community through the lines. And I'd like to take some time to speak in support of an earned sick leave ordinance for the city. This issue affects food system workers, like restaurant workers. At seventy percent, do not get paid sick leave. Corner store and grocery store workers don't get it. And many workers risk getting reprimanded or fired by asking to take a sick day. Oftentimes, people have to decide whether they're going to take a sick day, or get better, go to the doctor, stay with their children. And this also affects, in addition to the individual, the public health. Because if people are working when they should be recuperating, it runs the risk of getting other people sick. Other cities that have similar restaurant economies in New Jersey, like Jersey City and Montclair, have passed earned sick leave legislations. And I think it would be a good thing for New Brunswick to do. A lot of times, people who have earned, who do not have access to earned sick leave have to make a difficult choice when they lose money from not working, to take care of their health, to feed their families. And so I think that this, I think other people will be speaking on this, but the New Brunswick community through the lines is in support of this ordinance. Thank you.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Tomás Brito de aquí en New Brunswick.
Good evening, councilmembers, my name is Thomas, what is it?
Brito.
From here in New Brunswick. I'm here tonight to express some concerns I have. I work for an agency, a temp agency, and on days in which I'm not feeling well. I have to attend work anyway, doesn't matter if I have a fever, a headache, or any type of pain. If I don't show up for work that day, the agency from which I work with will not pay me for that work. So that week, my check will be short. When I pay my rent, the owner of the house doesn't care whether I miss that day or not. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, but. But there are many people in New Brunswick that are going through the same issue I am as well. Because there's many agencies that provide a lot of work for a lot of citizens in New Brunswick. What we want is the earned sick leave ordinance to get passed. In other cities within New Jersey, that ordinance is already in play. We're asking the mayor of New We're asking the mayor of New Brunswick on behalf of Unity Square...
Una reunión para nosotros expresarle toda la problemática que pasa el pueblo de New Brunswick.
A meeting with him to discuss the ordinance and the effects of having earned sick leave in New Brunswick.
Así en detalle, él pueda ver qué es lo que realmente el pueblo está pasando sobre los días pagados de enfermedad.
That way, in details and a more extended conversation, the mayor can see the effects of earned sick leave and how it can benefit New Brunswick.
No es un regalo, es cierta humanidad con nuestros trabajadores.
It is, it's not charity, it's a simple right that workers deserve.
De esa manera servir mejor a este pueblo.
And that way, be a more active community member of New Brunswick that way.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Women Aware and El Shabazz, Somerset, New Jersey.
I'm sorry, Mr. Shabazz.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Esther Barlow, I'd like to make a comment on the last speaker that just spoke.
I just wanna make a very brief comment. The mayor once, where do you see? The mayor once had a small meeting at Unity Square, and he did here for some of the residents about the concerns of having to address the sick leave. Hace unos meses atrás, nos reunimos en Unity Square, un grupo de presidentes con el alcalde que estaba presente y el concejal, presidente Iger, y paro presidente sigue hablando al alcalde sobre la necesidad de una ordenanza que diría la, con este problema de día de enfermedad pagos. I just wanna make sure that at that meeting we made clear that temp agencies, it's very hard to regulate them, so if there is an ordinance, which I think is, I don't know if it's, I think it's a great idea, but I just don't want people to think that it would regulate temp agencies, because it's a totally different, I call it a totally different situation when it comes to temp agencies, when it comes to the ordinance. So, I don't want people to get me to believe that with that, temp agencies are gonna stop doing this. Yo le quiero aclarar un poquito porque hablamos en esa ocasión de que el tener una ordenanza de día de pago, que yo creo que es beneficioso, yo estoy a apoyo, las agencias temporeras no cubren, no cubre día, porque nos pasó lo mismo con la otra ordenanza que hicimos sobre el robo de salario. Las agencias temporeras son totalmente, son reguladas por el estado diferente. Sí pueden afectar restaurantes y en otros sectores de negocio, pero no las agencias temporeras, no creo que las personas se confundan, porque nos explicaron que no, no tocarían a las agencias temporeras, aunque sí beneficia con los otros sectores de la comunidad. I just wanted to make sure that, 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 that.
Sí, yo quiero aclararle lo siguiente, agencia, en esas agencias temporeras, hay personas que tienen dos y tres años trabajando corrido, entonces...
En ese momento, explicaron que Unity Square estaba trabajando con agencias temporeras, creando como un pacto, explicándoles cuáles son las leyes, ¿no? Y estaban trabajando con eso. At that time, when we met with the residents, Unity Square was working with the temp agencies. They were doing a program to make them aware of the, maybe you know the, what, the kind of, there was an information packet in temp agencies working to inform them of the basic rights of employees and so forth. But, just talking about the ordinance, you know, I just wanted to make clear, so people understand that I don't believe that temp agencies would be affected by it. Solo quería mencionar eso, porque para mi parecer, hasta donde mejor conozco, no van a afectar a las agencias temporeras. No por eso se debe parar, pero que no, no creo que cubran, esta ley, la ordenanza no va a cubrir las agencias temporeras.
Por eso solicitamos una reunión para aclarar más, dar más luz sobre la problemática.
Thank you.
Tom Slade?
That's why he would like the meeting, just to clear up and iron out the details of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Women Aware and El Shabazz, Somerset, New Jersey. In the past, I submitted complaints to the council, but Mr. Hamilton claimed that due to me including the words unethical conduct in my complaint, the Ethics Board was the proper body for my complaint. So, Mr. Hamilton took it upon himself to forward my complaint to them. However, the Ethics Board claimed they do not have jurisdiction, which didn't surprise me at all. And at past council meetings, I informed the council that Internal Affairs covers up for police, the community liaison covers up for internal affairs, the hearing officer covers for them all, and I further advise you that the Ethics Board would just continue to cover up for the community liaison and the hearing officer. And the Ethics Board did exactly as I anticipated and foretold they would do. I would also note that the Ethics Board willfully deprived me of some basic rights that they afforded to Charlie Crowderville and his kids. For example, I was deprived of the right to ask questions, but Mr. Crowderville was allowed to ask many questions in his case. I wasn't allowed to ask any questions at all. I was deprived of sufficient time to speak and limited to only three minutes to speak before the Ethics Board. While Mr. Crowderville was allowed to speak for about 30 minutes in his case. So, the Ethics Board clearly engaged in unethical, unfair, discriminatory treatment against me, so I actually would like to file a complaint against the Ethics Board. And furthermore, since the Ethics Board claimed they don't have jurisdiction, that just further supports my original position that the council was the proper body for me to bring my complaints against the community liaison and hearing officer for violating the protocols that the council established. So, I request that the council now address my complaints that I filed against the community liaison and the hearing officer. Does anybody want to address my complaint?
Mr. Chairman?
The, I wasn't at the Ethics Board, so I'm not quite sure what occurred, so I can't make a comment on Mr. Shabazz's statements about what occurred. But I will tell you that a complaint filed by Mr. Shabazz alleged unethical conduct, I happened to read, Mr. Hamilton, it should have been sent to the Ethics Board. They have the responsibility to review it and have a hearing. There are certain, I imagine, and I can't quote chapter or verse off the top of my head, but there are parameters that Ethics Board has to review alleged unethical conduct, and I think that's what Mr. Shabazz is referring to, they said they didn't have jurisdiction. But that is where the matter goes. This council has no authority to discipline the city employee, okay? It's left to the executive and to the administrative body, if you will, to discipline employee in the department, that being the law departments, if this is needed. But the conduct initially was unethical conduct, went to the place that it should go to, and the Ethics Board apparently did what they did.
If the Ethics Board is stating that they don't have jurisdiction, that's not the proper place for it to go to, otherwise they would have jurisdiction, so clearly you're incorrect.
What's your opinion, sir?
It's a fact that they said they don't have jurisdiction.
Oh, I'm not...
So, then that's not the proper place for my complaint to go to.
What they said, I wasn't there, I don't know what they said.
If it was the proper place, they would have jurisdiction, so this is just common sense, man, you don't gotta be a rocket scientist or a Supreme Court justice to understand this.
What I'm saying is, this council doesn't have jurisdiction to hear that particular complaint either.
The council established, right? The mayor of the council established the community liaison office. So, if you establish an office, you have jurisdiction over that officer when you establish that office.
The mayor's office established the community liaison.
Along with the council, you had to vote in support of it. He couldn't just do it by himself. Otherwise, he wouldn't need your votes, is that not correct?
Advise and consent, yes.
You voted.
Yes.
So, he needed your votes, correct?
Mr. Chairman, he needed our votes to advise and consent to him establish?
He needed your votes to establish that office, correct? Otherwise, why would he even need your votes? He could just say, I'm the mayor, the community liaison officer has been implemented, deal with it. No, he needed your votes. If you would have said nay, there would be no community liaison.
Yes, he needed our votes for advise and consent, and I believe the salary was also part of it.
Correct, that means you have power over that office and officer. You have to approve the salary, you had to agree to even have the office, you have power. Stop acting like you're powerless.
Mr. Shabazz, we don't have the power in the way the city of New Brunswick works. Under the Faulkner Act, the mayor, the department heads, discipline the employees. We don't do discipline here, we don't have that power here. We do not have that power.
I'm gonna move on. Contrary to what Captain Miller stated, the New Brunswick Police Department engages in routine police misconduct, and Internal Affairs routinely covers up for its police. Although the mayor council implemented a hearing process that was supposed to address internal affairs problems, the community liaison officer and hearing officer routinely violate the protocols to help cover up for corrupt internal affairs, so the problems are systemic. And the only real solution to the problem is to establish a civilian review board at the young man from Rutgers, kidding. Furthermore, my next question would be, what is the status of the professional service agreement with the community liaison?
Does anybody know that answer? I don't have that answer, sir. At this time, we've got it for you.
Well, let me ask you a question. Last year, January 15th, I believe, was the date, the council passed a resolution for the community liaison to pay her the $30,000 for the whole year. I would assume that if that's the way you did business last year, why wouldn't January of this year you have passed the resolution for the community liaison for that professional service agreement? We're in April, the middle of April, so you should already dealt with this issue, you should know the answer.
Why don't you, you don't have to yell at me, I don't know the answer, I'm being honest with you.
But you should, that shows incompetence on your part, sir.
That's your opinion, doesn't it?
Yes, sir. I want you to stick to my opinion, sir.
Okay, you have every right to do that. Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
In 2015, was the city billed for the professional service agreement related to the community liaison and hearing officer? You should know the answer to that.
My understanding in 2015, there were no hearings that were conducted, so I believe the answer to the question is no, there were no hearings conducted by the community liaison or the hearing officer, but...
What's the city billed?
I'm sorry, sir?
Were we billed? I don't, I'm gonna say I don't believe so, we were not billed because we were...
I could check on that as well, but I don't believe so, there were no hearings or proceedings.
Okay, thank you. Last statement, I'd like the council to address the status of my complaint against Mr. Hamilton, was not, which didn't include any words about unethical conduct.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
As I stated at the last meeting, Mr. Shabazz, I apologize, you weren't here for that, I think Mr. Crowderville asked the question. I have taken that complaint and conducted an investigation, I'm just about done with it, I'm gonna report my findings to the mayor. Would you also serve that complaint on his side?
Yes, sir.
And I believe within the next seven days, you'll be getting a response. It's gonna happen that soon, sir. I apologize for the delay, it's my delay, I had a lot of things on my plate, I couldn't get into looking at all the circumstances and the facts here.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing I would simply say is, along with that complaint, I attached irrefutable evidence, a memo from Charlie Gaten herself, so it proves my allegations are true, there's no way for you to dispute it. So, you have to find it in my favor, if not, we're gonna have another problem with corruption.
Not if you address to the response, sir.
Backing to Mr. Shabazz.
Yes, sir.
Of course, when was the independent hearing process terminated and why? With the community liaison?
I don't know if it's terminated, sir.
It is terminated.
It is, sir?
Yes.
Is that true? I have not heard, the mayor has not announced that it's terminated, I have not heard that it's terminated. So, I don't know if that's true or not. I have not seen public statement in that.
Okay, well, I spoke with Ms. Gaten two days ago, she said I wanted to actually file a complaint, and she said that the process was terminated. So, it's terminated and you're not aware of being terminated?
That's correct.
Excuse me, was the way it was set up only for certain years?
There was a certain timeframe, that's true, Mr. Shabazz, and I, I want to... From January to January, we passed that. It was a specific timeframe of internal affairs complaints that individuals from the public did not feel that they got adequate review of, and that those particular complaints for that time period, if they arose out of that time period, could be brought to the community liaison and if appropriate, have a hearing. The timeframe was very specific, I think it was the period of time that Sergeant Rowe was the IA officer. So, that's what, my understanding, that's what it was set up to be, it wasn't IA complaints that, an incident that could happen tomorrow or yesterday, it was for that specific timeframe. And that was initially in the release from the mayor when he set up their office.
Did you guys determine a statute of limitation to where a person was able to file that? So, you're saying it was only for a certain timeframe, right?
Well, the hearing process was for those complaints that arose during that particular period of time.
When Richard Rowe was candidly IAs.
Okay, and so you've still not given the people an opportunity who wanted to file from that era, you just terminated it.
Well, I don't know that case, sir, you're telling us that now.
Telling you what?
That it was terminated for that period of time.
I'm giving you new information?
Sir, I have not heard that...
Can I have your job?
You want my job? Yeah, you run for office and see if you get elected.
All right, you're handpicked, why do I not run?
Whatever you want to assume.
Okay, all right. I wanna also address, in fact, how is the Breakfast by the Bell program going that was implemented a year ago? I want to know the status of that, the Breakfast by the Bell program.
Can anyone speak on the Breakfast by the Bell program at this time?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Levin?
Oh, there he is.
Officially, but it is being conducted in every elementary school in the city at this time. I do not know about the status at the middle school or the high school, but it has been implemented in every elementary school.
And it's true that you guys are aware that that program was implemented behind Newark, or initially implemented, the Breakfast by the Bell program, and the brother patterned that program after Newark, correct?
It was a program that's nationwide, so...
New Brunswick certainly was not the first city to do that, the Breakfast by the Bell.
It was right after Newark, not mistaken, right?
I don't know that answer, sir.
I don't remember.
He may have it's...
Do you know if it was right after Newark?
If it was patterned after Newark.
I don't know that it happened right after Newark, but it actually had been implemented in other cities across the country because it's a federal program even before Newark. So, I don't know the exact timeline, but we did implement hearing in New Brunswick after Newark, but I don't know the answer about whether it was patterned on Newark, because it was actually patterned against a federal program that had already been implemented in other states before New Jersey.
Now, I just mentioned that, you want me like in five seconds, too, if you let them clock over when you start?
Yeah.
Also, I mean, the reason I brought that up, because last time, last year I mentioned it, and Keith Jones Jr. the second said that it was patterned after Newark, so that's what made me get the idea that it was patterned after Newark. Which is, no, sounds like an excellent program, sounds like it's working for the kids, it sounds like it's, you know, the city has benefited from implementing this program. And my question is now, I was in Newark three weeks ago, I had the opportunity to meet Ross Baraka, he's the mayor of Newark, and what Newark is actually doing is they're implementing a civilian review board that'll be in effect in November. And after, you know, listening, because it's evident, they, you guys suspended, you guys terminated the independent hearing process, the only true outlet is the Internal Affairs, which is the police department, if you have a concern about police department. If you do go, you're saying you should go to the prosecutor's office, when you go to the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office, they deter you and send you downstairs, you're saying if you have issues, go to the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office. I dare anyone to go to the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office, because when you go there, they're gonna say they won't accept a complaint from you until you file one with Internal Affairs. So, that means we have no independent outlet when dealing with police concern. The only outlet that we have truly is Internal Affairs. I have two letters from Internal Affairs, that was, I have one from me, from my pimp that I received a month ago, and I have another letter from Noble Aaron Shabazz. And within three years, these letters state the same thing. I'm not gonna read it because I'm only a minute away, but I can show you about 75 to 100 people who received the exact same letter from Internal Affairs in every time that officer was exonerated, after investigating. So, we have no outlet. The only outlet we could have is a civilian review board. And being that you hear the concerns of the community... And being that you hear the concerns of the community, all different races, backgrounds, ethnic groups, all of them have a concern with the police department. And the police department isn't just racially profiling. It's not just the corrupt. They're also a machine to create revenue for the administration. That's first and foremost. These officers are designed to create revenue for the administration. So within that, so within creating revenue for the administration, that's when correctness comes in. The officers will be corrupt because a lot of you guys won't have a job if they don't create the revenue for you. You have about one hundred and twenty attorneys established all around downtown New Brunswick waiting for these officers to bring the community residents into court and funnel the system. So let's not act like we don't know that there's police corruption. You're benefiting off of police corruption. And that there, if you continue to benefit off of police corruption because they're creating revenue, that's called racketeering.
That's right.
And I don't know how long, if you wanted to stop, if you wanna stop racketeering, the safest way, the moving in the proper direction, is to create a civilian review board. And we can pattern it after Newark like we did the Breakfast by the Bell program. Thank you.
Good evening once again, Charles Cradville. I'd like to begin by actually thanking Captain Miller, thanking Council President Egan for helping me get ahold of the roster of the New Brunswick Police Department that had happened this week. Thank you for that. I also want to make you aware, I filed a public records request seeking all of the emails that the council has sent and received, and I wanted to ask if I should expect to receive those emails.
Who did you make that request to, sir?
To the city clerk. My time's still ticking.
Being reviewed by the city attorney? We're just being reviewed by the city attorney at this time, sir.
Well, I'll have you know that the request I submitted is the exact same request, you know, that I submitted last year, and I received the emails. But now I have a troubling problem where I filed the identical request, and now I don't get the emails I've sought. And I just wanna ask what the council's position is on that, whether or not you think your emails should be shared with a member of the public who wants to request them.
So, Mr. Cradville, last year you asked for our emails and you got them?
Yes.
So if you got them last year, I don't see any problem I should get them this year. And I'm not saying maybe they're reviewing them. I'm sure in time you're gonna get it?
Well, we do have a new city attorney now, and I have filed two different requests. One to get Jennifer Bradshaw, I'm sorry, one to get Mr. Marquette's emails from when he was the public information officer. And then I got all those emails, and then I requested the same identical request to get Jennifer Bradshaw's emails, and it's been denied twice. Are these public or not?
Hold on, sir. Mr. Shammy?
If I could address Mr. Cradville's comments. First of all, clerk is right. I review Oprah requests with the city clerk. The thing about Oprah is a law that changes every day, and regulations relative to Oprah change every day. And decisions come out and opinions come out which further define and interpret the regulations which govern Oprah. Mr. Cradville knows that very well. There are certain ways to ask for specific things, and there are certain requirements and parameters that you have to ask with specific language, and perhaps that is, you know, what Mr. Cradville was referring to. What you do today can't be governed by what was done last year or two years ago because cases change and sections of the statute get interpreted differently. Comes down to case law. That's how the law works, for better or for worse. So to the extent Mr. Cradville is seeking something that's permitted under Oprah, we're gonna supply it to him. There's no doubt about that. Just wanna make sure we know what he's asking for, clarify his request, and proceed accordingly.
Mr. Cradville, whatever you're entitled to under Oprah, I believe you're gonna receive after review by our city attorney.
So for clarification purposes, I'm seeking all emails sent or received from any of the council members since January first of last year. Do you think that I should get those?
Yes.
Terrific. So I'm looking forward to receiving those, and I would sure hate it if I'm denying. You guys look like.
I look forward to you getting them also, sir.
Thank you.
We gave them to you last year after the city attorney reviews them?
I'm not sure if you got them last year. I don't have a recollection. We get so many Oprah requests. I can't remember last week.
Well, I hope that the same thing will happen. I wanna say that I, you know, support the council, you know, voting their beliefs and turning down the application from the fraternity. I wanna ask though, especially Councilman Fleming, how do you feel about, not one, but two people being employed at the water utility who have used the N-word?
Once again.
First of all, before Mr. Fleming answers the question, okay? To the extent that Mr. Cradville is making a statement that deals with a personnel matter that we're not, nobody can discuss in a public forum such as this, I don't want Mr. Fleming's response to be taken as an acquiescence of what Mr. Cradville just said. So having said that, as long as it doesn't deal with a personnel issue that Mr. Cradville is making reference to, feel free to respond.
Technically, if that happened, I think that not just me asking me how I feel about it, I think that everybody should feel that it's a Republican thing. And personally, once again, I feel a little bit, I won't use the word offended, that you would ask me how I feel about somebody using the word nigger because, I mean, everybody on this council should feel some kind of way about it. So I don't think that, you know, just you singing me out because I might happen to be, my melon and my pill is different on this council that you could have asked every single person on there.
I asked you because you made a big deal.
Yeah, and I did. I made a big deal about the organization because I belong to a fraternity. I know how fraternities operate, and I know what this fraternity did, and I know what they did nationally. So that's how I felt about it.
Okay. Well, I think it's much more important what's going on with the water utility. And at the end of the day, I would like to know why the city did not push for termination of Mr. Wallace.
This is a matter we're not gonna discuss, this is a matter of the level of punishment matter for public discussion.
For the record, a lower-level employee used the word, used the racial slur off the job, city pushed for termination. Higher-level employee uses a racial slur on the job, you don't push for termination? Does that make sense to the council?
Once again, Mr. Cradville, we can't comment on a personnel issue. Our attorney's advisor does not comment on the issue.
I think we got a real problem with the water utility. It's not just that there's two people who felt it was okay to use that word, but it's also, I think the key word of today is systemic. People of color have been passed over for promotions at the water utility in favor of promoting less qualified, less experienced white people. Is the council okay with that? Are you looking into this at all?
Where do you get that information from, sir?
The facts.
Are they the facts? I've never heard of that before, so I can't answer that, sir.
Are you gonna look into it?
Sir, I'm not, I'm not, what am I gonna look into? Your accusations?
Yes.
That what?
Exactly what I just said.
Say it again.
That people of color have been passed over, more experienced people were not promoted, and the promotions of the better jobs, the higher-up jobs, the higher-paying jobs were given to white people with less experience.
We'll look into that.
Thank you. I have a theory on why perhaps Mr. Wallace was not pushed, why they didn't push for termination. Is it because you're using his license to operate the water utility and you desperately need him to keep that license?
Cradville, once again, we're not commenting on the personnel issue at the water department, so.
Ah, cool. Now I'm asking, are you using Mr. Wallace's license because American Water didn't want their license being used?
Mr. Wallace is an employee of the water department. I don't know if we're using his license or not. I thought we were using the licenses from American Water. Those are the licenses we're using.
I think there's someone here from the water utility. Can you tell me, is Mr. Wallace's license being used?
Mr. Wallace has a license, obviously. We still are in contrast with the Middlesex Board. So I don't know the nature of the question.
American.
American Water, I'm sorry.
Well, last I checked on the D E P website, it's got Mr. Wallace's name on it. His T-four license is being used, and I'm asking you, why is his license being used? Is it because American Water didn't want their license to continue being used?
I don't know that answer, sir.
Are you gonna look into it?
We'll have that question answered for you, sir.
I'm very concerned that the water utility might not be meeting their numbers or doing what they're supposed to be doing. And that's why Mr. Wallace's license is being used, and that's why Mr. Wallace was not terminated. The city denied and pushed for termination after he used a racial slur on the job, and that is wrong. The last issue I need to bring up is just, I am appalled that no one here knows that the community liaison and the hearing officer process that was implemented has been abolished. You didn't get the memo. Mr. Pittman and myself got the memo, but the city's law director and all four members of the council that are here tonight were unaware that this process was abolished. What do you have to say for yourself?
What I can say for myself?
Yes.
Sir, what do you, I don't understand what I can say for myself. No one told me. I mean, I can only go by what people tell me. No one informed me.
Well, that's assuming Mr. Cradville's correct.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, this is your, I never, the mayor, I'm sorry, sir.
You have the memo, sir.
The mayor, the mayor has not announced or told me that he is taking that, abolishing the position of the liaison. That's his call. I've never heard it from him. Nobody else here said they heard it from him. So this is your act, you're saying it. Mr. Pittman is saying it. I respect what you guys are saying. I'm being honest with you. That's it.
I heard it from Ms. Gaden, and I speak the truth. She told me, process is over. It's closed. It's abolished. She said she was surprised that there wasn't a press for this. I'm surprised too, and I'm very surprised that the council has shown up unprepared and unaware that this.
Have I prepared for something that I don't know? You wanna give me a quiz on something I don't wanna be answering, sir?
I just wanna say something for the record. I did ask Mr. Shammy today what was the update, and he didn't know. He didn't know, so.
Right, exactly, exactly, exactly. Ms. Gaden's direct supervisor did not know that she has abolished.
No, she, the mayor has not said anything. The mayor is the one who has to abolish that process. I don't know what Ms. Gaden said to you, and I'm not doubting what you're saying. I'm just saying that I wasn't there. But I did ask about the process.
She said it was the mayor's call, but I want to be clear, this reeks of the same problem with the American Water deal where the mayor went behind the public's back, behind the council's back, and signed a secret deal with American Water and told you guys maybe an hour before the meeting. At least he told you that time. Now he left you guys hanging, and I am shocked that you are not a part of the process. If you're an elected official, you should be a part of the process. I'm tired of you guys passing the buck. I just need to ask one more question. Did you look into the memo that I brought last time? The memo that showed that Ms. Gaden was looking into Mr. Shabazz and not into the.
You're ready to discuss that. Mr. Shammy said he's looking into it. He's gonna come to the decision. He's gonna notify Mr. Shabazz. I'm ready. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, the last.
You said that was the last.
That was the last question.
This is the double last?
I just wanna say.
Go ahead, buddy. I want you to finish.
Thank you. I just wanna say, I was pleased to see so many people come out and speak their mind tonight. I hope they come to the next council meeting at May sixth, and I just wanna encourage people to file complaints when they see something wrong. I would say skip the prosecutor's office, even skip the A.G.'s office because they seem like they're corrupt too. Go to the FBI if you can. Bring your complaints to the FBI, Federal Bureau of Investigation. It's the only way we're gonna see any change, that people keep filing complaints. So keep filing complaints and come to these meetings and keep speaking your mind. Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am.
Question number one. How would we go about getting Mayor Cahill to answer some of our questions on the record?
You have to talk to Mayor Cahill.
Okay. And so we're clear. Is there, was there a time period for the community liaison position? From when it was implemented, was there a cutoff date from the beginning?
A cutoff date of the job or a cutoff date of what issue is due?
Of the job, of the time period. I think Mr. Shammy said it was supposed to go for a year.
There was a time period that the community liaison was supposed to facilitate those individuals who had incidents that occurred during that time period that did not feel that they got their complaint adequately reviewed by Internal Affairs to come to her and present that complaint again if it occurred during that specified period of time. And I believe it was the period of time that Sergeant Rowe was in I.A. I don't know the exact dates off the top of my head. I apologize. I'm not that good. But that was the period of time for complaints that would be reopened, if you will, and if necessary, have a hearing with the hearing officer. As far as the community liaison position goes, I'm not aware that there was a time period on that. I still don't necessarily agree with Mr. Cradville that there is no such community liaison anymore. I don't know that the big case or not the big case.
Okay, thank you.
So we don't know the time period that you talked about for the investigations?
It was complaints that arose out of that specified time period. But if you had a person who came forward presently who had a potential complaint during that time period, that's when that particular hearing process would be triggered, you know?
Right, I understand why it was implemented and there was a time period of mishandling of Internal Affairs cases and why that, the process was implemented. What I'm asking is, do we have a date of time period for people to come forward? Was there a cutoff date for that?
Not now.
Okay, so that's why you're not aware that it's been abolished, okay. If we get to the point where it has been abolished or, you know, removed, will that be public knowledge? Like, will it come before you to vote whether you wanna do away with it or will it be announced?
I don't think it needs to come to a vote, but I believe the mayor's office would make an announcement or something like that to announce that the liaison is no longer.
So what would you recommend we do to try to express our concern about doing away with the process? I mean, if there was five years of mishandling Internal Affairs complaints, I think a year is not sufficient. I think it should be five years for people to come forward. Like, you know, people may not, might not hear about it. I don't think a year is fair to say, well, you know, we got five years of mishandling, so to speak, but you get, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days to come forward. I think, you know, it should be equivalent. So how do we go about, you know, bringing that as, you know, an option instead of?
It's been more than three years that the office has been established.
Right. The established, the office has been established for three years now.
Okay.
More than three years.
January of twenty twelve.
January of twenty twelve is when it was established.
Over three years.
It's been over three years now.
But if we wanted it to last the same period, the same time period as the mishandling of the Internal Affairs, how do we go about making that request?
Request that to the mayor's office. You have to ask the mayor if he can meet with you and you let him request that to be the same time period that was believed, and you want it to be extended a year or two, that would be up to the mayor.
Okay, and even though the process may be closed or potentially be closed, what do we do about the two people that went through the process and all the kinks that were in it trying to work it out? I don't think it's fair to those people that they had to go through that process, and there was clear evidence that there were some things done wrong, which is what I've been coming back and forth here, you know, time I get here, and I'm asking for an update, and nothing is ever done. If the position is eliminated, that's fine and all well and good. We'll do what we have to do because we're not gonna stop because the problems haven't stopped. But what I wanna know is, are we going to move forward with the two people that did go through the process and failed them terribly? What are we gonna do about that?
It was always my understanding that even after going through that process, if someone felt that they weren't satisfied, that they could go to the county prosecutor's office having their matter vetted and a hearing conducted. I suppose that avenue is still available. But there's no, to my knowledge, appeal process from that hearing process after the hearing officer makes a decision.
So if someone, if the process itself failed, you still can't appeal it if it wasn't the complainant's fault?
Well, maybe there's a misunderstanding with respect to the process. This was, you know, a hearing that was conducted to try to have a particular individual's complaints air. The determination, whatever it may have been, from the hearing officer is final at that level. Like I said, there's no automatic right to appeal across the street to the superior court. It's not that type of process. My understanding is, is the appeal process or if someone's not happy with the result, they would then go to the prosecutor's office and say, I still have this complaint that hasn't been adequately addressed, here are the facts or circumstances. Um, because at that point, they would've exhausted their remedy here at the local level with IA and with the process that was implemented by the mayor's office.
Could they also file a suit on their own?
They could do whatever they want. Mr. Anderson said earlier, he can file suits, we all know that, I mean.
I just wanna say that, um, I think that the process, eh, was led to work. I think that the implementation of the process, especially at the beginning, with, it wasn't done, in my opinion, correctly. Uh, I don't think that has anything affected the decision. I'm not talking about the judgment of the final decision of the judge, but to me, if it's something that, eh, we need to go through this again, we have to be more, look into more from the Genco and, and see how that process was implemented and make sure that the same things that were not done correctly doesn't happen again. So, it's, it's in terms of implementation, I always say that the implementation of the process, in my opinion, was not done correctly. Afterwards, then we started, you know, they, they started to, eh, follow the process as it is, but I think that what the mayor put in place, it was working, it was just that we didn't do it the right way at the beginning. Being the first time that we needed to do it, um, I guess it was a new process. But I myself, eh, eh, and I've always said, I stand my, my opinion that I would use that the process was implemented correctly at the beginning.
Moving forward, since this process was obviously implemented for a time period of dealing with Rich Rowe, what recourse do you people have now that are still dealing with, um, internal affairs and feeling that they're not getting their cases handled properly? What, what is the recourse there?
You mean, if, after you go to the, go with the IA, I, I believe you go to the prosecutor's office, that's, that doesn't, according to your husband, that doesn't work out because they send you right back, Mr. Pittman said, until you get to file a report with the IA. In New Brunswick, the prosecutor's office won't, won't hear your complaint.
And, and so with all of this chaos and confusion and everything that you've heard over the past few years, you guys can't do anything to help us? I mean, I listened to the beginning, and I'm not gonna, I don't have a lot of time, so I'm not gonna, you know, repeat what the gentleman said about why, you know, you, you guys didn't vote on ordinance or five, or resolution five-five-seven. We have that same problem with this city in New Brunswick. We have, you know, we can go from this year to that year and police brutality and all kinds of stuff. Come here, show you, tell you, you can read documentation that your officers perjure themselves, and we can't get any justice. We get bounced around and, and everybody gets their, their situations covered for them from Charlie Gayden to the police, it's just ridiculous. But guess what, we're not gonna stop, and, because you know what, they haven't stopped. Griegus, he's a problem, he has not stopped. And I have no confidence in Internal Affairs, but he, he messed with the wrong mother when he arrested my son, young fool, and the charges were dismissed. He has not stopped, and I told you, all the sensitivity training in the world is not gonna change somebody rotten to the court, and that man is rotten to the court.
Yep.
He has been involved in multiple people coming before you, and he has not stopped. And I'm telling you, because you don't listen and you do nothing, you're just as guilty as that police department, because you sit by and do nothing. We have tried and we begged you to help us. And that monster, he's grown, and he's not gonna stop until you tame that beast.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I need a motion.
Oh.
There's a motion. Anybody else want to speak before we adjourn? Alright, come on, you can come on up. I need, come on, come on.
Missed two weeks, I'll be serious for the next one.
Alright.
I want you guys to get home and get to see, get home and get to bed.
Thank you.
Motion, second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Esmar. Council Vice President Fleming.
Yes.
Council President Egan.
Yes.